Overdressed?
Always.
Always.
Always. Oh, there's Yumila. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for February 10th, 2025 to order at 7:02 PM.
It is. Are you sick?
No.
Okay.
We do have a-
It's always there.
Okay.
And the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for January 28th, 2025. I know that folks had a chance to take a look at them. Any other changes people want to make? Oh, actually, before we start, since I don't see Pat online, he wasn't sure if he was going to be able to make it or not, I will appoint Yumila a voting member for tonight.
Thank you.
Any other changes to the January 20th minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone to bring anything up from the public that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan, please. Reporting for the Board of Trustees.
Hey, Susan.
Hello.
Okay, hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2025-4836. The Southern Cuyahoga Lake Intermunicipal Water Commission is planning to construct a 20 by 20 building addition to house new electrical equipment on the north side of the raw water pumping station located at Bolton Point Road, tax parcel number 42.1-1-37.1. Do you want to give us an update, Mike?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. A couple items. You went over the short EAF last week, or not last week, last meeting. Today you have part two and part three in front of you. The other item is, in a second, if Brett Cross has anything else to add, that'd be, we'd be grateful. And the last item is, it had been mentioned about a floodplain application, last meeting, and because the village doesn't have any floodplains, actually, the only place there is a floodplain would be where this building is, and that's, we don't have any other parcels that are built in the floodplain. So after reviewing, I believe it's Chapter 78 on floodplans, I have reviewed a letter that was given to us from Barton and Leguidis, from an engineer who has explained about the floodplain limits, and I have cross-referenced it to our village code to make sure that it complies, and it does comply, and it also says in our village code that I have sole responsibility to approve it or not. So seeing how it meets all the criteria, that I will approve the floodplain application. So just wanted to let you know. Brett, you sent out an email a little bit earlier. Do you want to kind of give us the Reader's Digest version of what you have to say about that?
Sure. So I apologize, I got out of town last week, so I didn't get back to you before I got out of town, and I actually did not have a conversation with Greta either, but Greta provided Mike with that very lengthy, well, or significant communication with the Army Corps of Engineers, and from my reading, it looks like that they've made their application directly to the Army Corps, and they've directly been given permission to have coverage under the Nationwide Permit. I've forgotten the numbers, but it seems pretty clear that the window of opportunity to have an opinion about that has long since closed. For whatever reason, we've had, this is not our first project that we've been kind of left out of the loop by the Army Corps of Engineers. I could go on quite a long time about what the other one was, but I'll save everybody the misery. But at any rate, the positive thing is, is they've sought their approval from Army Corps, and they've received their approval from Army Corps. And as Mike just explained, there's another element to the process for, just for the local FEMA slash, you know, I don't even know all of the regulations, but as Mike just described it, I think he's got a handle on. I was going to recommend that if he hadn't already had done that good research, that probably we should put in some kind of a condition that would say that if and when, you know, Mike and I figure things out, that there would be appropriate approvals. But I think Mike's got it covered there, and I think he's right that it's, I think, as the floodplain, I don't know, are you technically a floodplain manager? Is that correct?
Supposedly the floodplain administrator.
Administrator, right, yep, that's the word. So I fully defer to Mike's research, because I think he's, it looks like he's a step ahead of me on that. So really, the only other thing that I think that was on my plate was the actual consideration of the stormwater impacts, and, you know, by no means am I thinking that this has any significant impact, but I think we did explain at the last meeting that we traditionally routinely require that the applicants utilize two of the green practices, and I don't know if Barton Leguidis has responded to that, to Mike or not, but I don't, I'm not aware of what they may have chosen to do, but maybe, you know, I see Greta's online, maybe she could let us know what's going on with that.
Yeah, thank you, Brent. So I can give an update. So after the last planning board meeting, we, BNL team, got back together, we touched base with Steve Riddle with Bolton Point. We'd like to just get some more clarification on whether or not that green infrastructure piece is going to be required for this project. We certainly understand the benefit of green infrastructure in many types of project settings, but the project site is very unique in that it's right on the shoreline of the lake, and the amount of new impervious area is only 400 square feet. It's right on the shoreline. We did take a look at the stormwater manual, and I touched base with one of our stormwater engineers in the office, and it doesn't seem to make sense, just on a site constraint level, to implement green infrastructure runoff reduction practices, just given the position of the site, the position of the building, you know, we're so close to the shoreline, we don't want to put any more disturbance or fill below ordinary high water. I'm not even sure that would be permitted, to put a stormwater meeting below the ordinary high water of the lake with the Corin D.C., and then we certainly don't want to add more disturbance inside of the floodplain. It just seemed a little bit, as we started thinking about it more, it seemed a bit counterproductive to disturb the floodplain more, to add a stormwater practice. So those were the main flags that we saw as we took a harder look at it, but certainly open to feedback and thoughts from the board on that.
What, I should have, like I said, followed up on it, but I can't remember, is it a peaked roof or a flat roof on the building?
It's a, it's a hip roof. Hip, oh, it's, it's a pitched roof on three sides, yeah.
Okay.
Shingle.
Usually, some of the more common green practices we see are, if there's going to be, if there's going to be no gutters, then, you know, there would normally be some amount of green lawn between the building and whatever, you know, water impoundment. In this case, I don't think that's available to you. So I guess the other option would be if there was gutters, that it would be sent, I mean, I think off the top of my head, I even think that, like, rain barrels are considered a practice, so, I mean, there's, it would just be that if there was any way that the water could be discharged onto the ground in such a way that it didn't just run directly off into the lake, I think would be all that I would, you know, recommend, and certainly it would be up to this, the planning board to, you know, to hear your appeal or request. So, you know, I certainly understand, it is unusual, it's a very unique little project, so your request isn't out in my field, but I think that there still might be some opportunities to do some things, and we didn't have that conversation ahead of time, so unfortunately we didn't, so.
I think for the board's consideration, the area around this building addition is going to be unpaved and seeded.
Yeah, looking at the plans, we have about five feet of lawn cover proposed between the edge of the building and the proposed riprap stabilization along the shoreline, and then we do have shrub plantings in the forms of live stakes within that riprap area, and we have shrub container plantings proposed just along the edge within the lawn area above the riprap. So we were thinking that those plantings would also provide a benefit for stormwater runoff, you know, it's not just dumping right into the lake, that will create a more vegetated shoreline than exists currently, and that will help attenuate and filter stormwater runoff as well.
Michael or Brent, do you have that list of the, of the, I was just looking for it, and I can't find it, do you know where it is, the list of the best practices that are-
I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, being out of town.
I don't remember them being very ar-.
Some of them are very easy.
Some of them were pretty, something I thought, well, I could do that, you know. I'd like to be sure that we know that it's really not possible for them to choose to before we get too carried away.
Mike, do you have a comment?
No, I was just, I was seeing if I had a list here handy.
Yeah, see if you can find it. So as it's written right now in the resolution, that is a condition in the resolution, that two of the best practices-
Right.
Let's see the exact language. Shall implement at least two of the green design best practices to the satisfaction and approval of the Village of Lansing engineer and stormwater officer. So that's currently a condition on the resolution, and that is something that we have sort of standardized on with previous special permits, so.
Right.
It seems like we could just leave that language and just let, you know, Mike and I work with Greta to, I mean, the explanation she just gave sounds, you know, perfectly reasonable, that there, as long as there's some kind of vegetation between the wall of the building and the edge of the water, that would give us, I mean, it may not even give us the, I think there's some dimensional expectation, but even if you couldn't meet the full dimensional expectation, at least if there was green grass there that was going to be, act as a biofilter, so that seems practical or possible, and, you know, I would think that between Mike and I and Greta, we could, you know, if that condition was still in there, that we'd come to some reasonable conclusion.
Yeah, you know, my preference would be to leave that condition in there again, it's something that we've standardized on, but to Brent's point, yeah, leaving it up to, you know, Mike and Brent on behalf of the village to use their best judgment to meet that, that's fine. Go ahead, Yumila, yeah.
So I'd love to know a little bit more about, you know, unfortunately, grass isn't really that, that, grass doesn't actually control runoff the way other plantings do. So a lawn is actually not that much different in terms of stormwater calculations than, you know, than having like a gravel driveway or something like that. Because it's so close to the water, if we can put, get a hold on those best practices, and maybe look at some things that offer better stormwater mitigation than a lawn, I would love to see those as options. It could be, I mean, there are lots of ground covers that would, you know, function the way a lawn would function, but actually have better stormwater practices and decent symptoms.
So leave it, so leave it up to Brent and Mike to come up with something, Yumila, is what, do you agree with that, or?
Well, I, how about this, I think it would be great if we had some sort of metric that we could use to say, you know, let's try to do, especially because it's so close to the water, let's try to do something better than grass, because grass is not considered that much better than, you know, than an untreated area. So I'm not quite sure what Mike and Brent have as, as resources for that, that we could rely on as a village, but I'd love there to be something that we can point to and say, you know, use that instead.
Good thought, actually.
I think our resources are defined by what the green practices are identified within the D.C. design standards. I don't, Greta had mentioned some other plantings, you know, maybe there's value to those, and, you know, we certainly could take a look at what, you know, what they are without getting into a lot of detail tonight. We should be able to give that evaluation and give it, you know, credit where credit is due, so to speak. But I, I understand, and I, I think that I would want to respond to Yumila's comments. In general, I, you know, I think it's worth the effort, because it is so close, so I think we could, you know, we can find some, some happy medium ground to work with.
Other comments or questions? Okay. So I think everybody also does have a copy of the 239 back. They didn't find anything there. We did the part one of the EAF last time. We can do part two, everybody should have that in front of them. So I will read down these, and if anybody has any comments or anything, let me know. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations, no or small?
Hey, Mike?
Yeah?
Can you share, and I'll put this up on the screen, please?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you.
There you go. There you go.
You're not very good at sharing, Mike.
I just did it. Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land, no or small? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community, no or small? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, no or small? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway, no or small? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conversation, conservation, excuse me, or renewable energy opportunities, no or small? Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies, no or small? B, public-private wastewater treatment facilities, no or small? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, no or small? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna, no or small? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems, no or small? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health, no or small? Any comments on that? So everybody then should have in front of them a resolution for, Seeker, for this special permit. So I'll read that off. Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Seeker Review of Special Permit Number 2025-4836, adopted on February 10th, 2025. Whereas, A, this matter involves consideration of the following proposed action, Special Permit Number 2025-4836, for the proposal by the Southern Cuyahoga Lake Intermunicipal Water Commission to construct a 20 by 20 building addition to house new electrical equipment on the north side of the raw water pumping station located at Bolton Point Road, tax parcel 42.1-1-37.1. And on January 28th, 2025, and February 10th, 2025, Village of Lansing Planning Board and Performing Lead Agency Function for its independent and uncoordinated environmental review in accordance with Article 8 of New York State Environmental Conservation Law, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker. One, determined that the proposed action provided for herein is an unlisted action in accordance with Seeker. Two, thoroughly reviewed the short environmental assessment form and any and all of their documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Three, completed its thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have significant adverse impact on the environment, including the criteria identified in 6 N.Y.C.R.R., Section 617.17(c), and four, completed the short EAF. And now, therefore, be it resolved as follows. We have two options, we can find this a negative declaration or a positive declaration. I will entertain a motion to find this a negative declaration.
I move that we find that the Seeker for Review of Special Permit Number 2025-4836 has a negative declaration.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor? With that part done, there's nothing to, I think, add to part three, so I will sign that at the end of the meeting, Mike?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, okay. And then, before we move on to general conditions and the special permit resolution, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go ahead, Jim. Somebody else.
Did you, was that by you, Yumila? Okay. Was that by Yumila?
I couldn't hear her.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will read off the general conditions.
Oh, boy.
No special permit will be granted by the planning board or the Board of Trustees unless the requested activity meets the following requirements. One, it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Oh, there you go. Two, it will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity or neighborhood. Three, it will not impede the orderly development of the vicinity or neighborhood and is appropriate in appearance and in harmony with the existing or intended character of the vicinity or neighborhood. Four, the street system and off-street parking facilities can handle the expected traffic in a safe and efficient manner. Five, natural surface water drainage ways are not adversely affected. Six, water and sewage or waste disposal facilities are adequate. Seven, the general environmental quality of the proposal in terms of site planning, architectural design, and landscaping is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Eight, lot access, parking, and loading facilities are sufficient for the proposed use. Nine, the requested use or facility conforms in all other respects to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located. And 10, the applicant has shown the steps will be taken where necessary to meet all performance standards and all other applicable general regulations. I will entertain a motion to say the general conditions have been met.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
By Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we can move on to the special permit that everybody has in front of them, resolution, special permit resolution, sorry. So this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Special Permit Number 2025-4836, adopted on February 10th, 2025. I am not going to read A, because I've already read that a few times tonight. I will start with B. On January 28th, 2025, and February 10th, 2025, Village of Lansing Planning Board opened and continued a public hearing regarding this proposed action, and therein thoroughly reviewed and analyzed, one, the materials and information presented by and on behalf of the applicant in support of this proposed action, including information and materials related to the environmental issues, if any, which the board deemed necessary or appropriate for its review. Two, all other information and materials rightfully before the board, including, if applicable, comments and recommendations, if any, provided by the Tompkins County Department of Planning in accordance with GML 239-Hell and M. Three, all issues raised during the public hearing and/or otherwise raised in the course of the board's deliberations. On February 10th, 2025, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in accordance with Article 8 of New York State Environmental Conservation Law, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and 6 N.Y.C.R.R., Section 617.5, and Section 123.2 of Village of Lansing Code, and amended on environmental review, and adopted a resolution for Seeker review in connection with Special Permit Number 2025-4836. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we have two options, we can grant the special permit, or we can deny the special permit. We do have the normal conditions that we put on here, soil and erosion control measures approved by the Village of Lansing engineer and Lansing stormwater officer, required permits, approvals, things like that. Before the issuance of a building permit, a site plan with erosion control measures must be approved by the village engineer, and then the one that we've started to put on, E, applicant shall choose and implement at least two of the green design practices to the satisfaction and approval of the Village of Lansing engineer and stormwater officer. I will entertain a motion to approve the special permit. Motion by Yumila?
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, so I guess, you know, get in touch with Mike and Scott about, you know, any questions, especially as it relates to the condition about the green design practices, and good luck, thanks.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is-
Hey, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you again. I wanted to, I wanted to thank Brett Cross on this, and I'm not sure that we need his services the rest of the evening, if he would like to enjoy whatever he's going to enjoy from this point on, if you guys don't mind.
I am fine with that.
Gee, I don't know.
I do have one potential question, but I will just email it to you, Brent, and you do not have to stick around.
Okay, yeah, well, that's great, thank you very much.
Good night.
Thanks, Brent.
Bye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Ecode's presentation, so this is a topic that came up during our joint meeting that we had with the trustees earlier this year, and Todd is here from Ecode to present to us some information. I know that the proposal that you have in front of you, it's been printed out and distributed a few times around email, so I think a lot of the information in here, people have had a chance to see already, so don't feel that you have to go over it word by word. They've already heard me talk enough tonight.
Those are sweats.
I can take notes.
Oh, thank you.
And put it in my next stuff.
These are not gifts, they're for copious and abundant notes that you're going to be taking.
There you go, perfect, I always end up taking them on.
Thank you. Todd, is that the hand, that's the handout? I can bring it up on here if you want that, or?
Three extra copies, if anybody needs them, or you can do whatever you, whatever you'd like.
You want it up on-
Does somebody-
Planning Board, you want it up on here? Yumila, you want it up on the screen?
She said yes. There you go.
She said yeah.
I'll try to follow along.
Everybody's got these?
Yep.
That's a first. Very terrific.
And you have a copy of it.
This is where I sit in the spot.
Yeah, wherever, it'll, it'll all work out.
Well, thank you for having me. My name's Todd Metcalf, I'm the New York Account Manager, General Code. Yeah, I cover the whole state, people ask me usually where I'm out of, and I say, you see that gray van out there? This is my first of three board meetings this week, I do this quite often, I enjoy it, it's a, it's a good part, so. Plus, you have a great area here, I did spend four years on South Hill, a long time ago, that I remember most of. Anyway, so the way this session works best is when I come and I present to boards, and it's, and they haven't had a chance to understand or see a proposal or whatever, it gets, it goes down rabbit holes. So I'm trying to talk about codification and what codification is, and all this and that, so we're past that. Carolyn had reached out to me, it's a blur, I do this all day, every day-
Last year.
Six, seven months ago, and said, do you guys help with existing codes? And I said, yes, we do, and we really help with existing codes that we did initially, which she didn't realize, so that, just to take you a little back with how that relationship started. So that, just to take you a little back with, with how that relationship started, we originally did a contract, an agreement to do your code from scratch in 1992. Sylvia Smith, I looked it up, was the clerk, and Ted Wixson was the mayor.
Yep, he became the mayor, I think.
So, and I have that agreement still, so it, it's kind of fun to see where this all, how this all came through. General Code has been a codifier for over 63 years. Started in Ogden, outside of Rochester, by a person, Mr. Kit. His son was a, was a really good skier. I don't even remember that name. He couldn't find anything. He had files and files and files and files of adopted legislation. He said, I'm gonna take this, and he, who knows how long he took, and he went home, and he took and organized it. It's how codification really began for General Code and the business. He took everything from logic or from chronological order and put it into logic. He put it into chapter form, A to Z, animals to zoning, sometimes it's amusements to zoning or alcoholic beverages to zoning or whatever. So that's, that's what it was. And then he took all that legislation and he put it in where he thought was the appropriate chapter. Came up with Ogden's Code. Like he moved things around a lot. He wasn't sure if he wanted bingo and gaming, he was not sure he had gaming as a, as a chapter. So that's, that's kind of just a little background again, that was over 60 some years ago. About six years ago, we were purchased by International Code Council. I don't give a lot with that because those are the white books, the Electrical Code, the Fire Code, the Water, the, all the, all those individual white books. New York State has adopted the International Code Council books as is, therefore there's other states will go and, and customize those and make them fit, but New York's adopted. So, but that just gives you an idea of who we're with now. And we've recently, in the last five years, bought probably three other codifiers. So we're totally around the, around the globe, or around the, international threw me off, around the country. So the original agreement was, was agreed upon in 92, and that code we did for you, and it was adopted in 1996. It didn't get updated after that by us. So it looks, the next I found on your website was 2005, was when you brought it in-house or the attorney or somebody, you did it. So, great, you know, you, or I'd rather see everybody have a code than, than not. And it always, it's something you continue to adopt legislation, so it's a good place to have it where it can be enforced. 2005, when I talked to Carolyn, I went and pulled, it, it looked like it had been kept up to date till 2002, okay? I went, or at least on the website was what I, what I saw. I went to the New York State Department of State. I got the legislation from 2002, or from 2002 through Local Law 7 of 2024. And I checked that earlier today, I think it's the last thing. So there hasn't been any adopted legislation yet in 2025. But when I had all that legislation, I went through it and with my legal editors, and we got an idea of what we were working with, and I created this proposal for you. The project, and by all means, don't just ramble, I'll keep talking, but if there's questions, shoot them out. What we're proposing, we're gonna take all that, the 96 code, even though it's been based, updated to be the 2005 code, all the new legislation, and we're gonna do a re-codification, we call it, okay? We're gonna go through, we're gonna look at the chapter outline, see if that's still good, if there's some additional chapters, if there's some movement around or this or that, and then we will come back and you'll say, yeah, we like what it is, or we wanna make these changes, or we like what you've said. Then that gets done, and then we start to go into the meat of the, of the project. And I haven't said it to you, but I say it all the time, this is not an overnight project, okay? So, and my, I like to brag on my editors. All my editors, or my legal editors are all attorneys, and they have been, it says 17 years, but that's across the states. They've all been with the General Code over 25 years. They know the ins and outs, that they've done all my New York codes for the last 25 years. They know state law, they know the regulations, they have it all. And a lot of times, my clients during the project are amazed about how much is brought to them as suggestions. How many inconsistencies should they find between chapters? Inconsistencies with state law? All that's what gets done in this editorial analysis process. And they finish that, they will actually, they, they bring it back for your review. And we now do that in an electronic format. It used to come in a binder, and you'd get it, and it would have the suggestions and places to write in. It, it was, it was a reason a lot of projects got stalled, I believe. Now it's electronic, and it mirrors Ecode 360. If any of you used it, we'll talk about it. So it's the same type of tool. It will have their questions, their suggestions, their comments. All of this has been done reading every word of the code and the legislation that they, that we've collected. And it'll go through by chapter, and it'll have the questions and the clarifications, and it might say, as you can imagine, a lot of it is around penalties and fees and things like that, it seems like. They also suggest a lot now that you take the fee schedule out of the code, because every time it changes $5 for something or $10 for something, it's getting a local law done, it's coming back to me, and I gotta charge you to update it. So now what they even put in there, they said, for a current list of fees available in clerk's office, or something like that. And it's just a piece of paper that gets changed. So these are the things I'm telling you that, that can get done on your behalf. We know budgets are tight, we know things are tight, and this is a long process. So these are a couple of the things that, that come up. Other one, just came up with one, I was helping a new rep in Pennsylvania. It was on food trucks. And nothing. And they knew it. Long story short, we went through, it was, in Pennsylvania, they called food trucks mobile push carts. But they had had food truck in the code in this situation, they had mobile push carts. So organizing that, what do you want it to be? Well, we want it to be mobile push carts. So those are the types of things that, that get done and go through. So we do this organizational analysis, that's the chapters, it's good, signed off. When you start to do the editorial analysis, that comes back, there's an online tool provided for that with all the questions. I have a training specialist and myself and the editor, we are on the call with the designated people from the village that, that we go through on how to use the tool, okay? Here's all the questions, here's what the options are to answer. The attorney or the editor will give you an idea and say, hey, we see this in a lot of municipalities, you wanna consider this? And you go, yeah, that's good. Or, then there's a spot where you could actually, we like this, but we wanna change this up. You can type in, there's space to type in. If it's a big chapter you just did or something, or a big piece of legislation you just did, there's a way to attach the file to the tool, and then you move on to the next questions. A lot of these questions are, are simply acknowledging things. Some of the first questions are, you know, what color binder do you want? You know, things like that to check off. So you, you get through it pretty quick, but then you'll get to things that'll be like, oh, wait, Todd, we don't know about that. We're not ready to deal with that right now. And you can just have a spot saved for later. Or if you answer something within the tool, needs review by the attorney or somebody, you could put needs review, and over in the tool they have, here's the ones that need review that are my, assigned to mine. I recommend getting people from different areas. Usually, you know, two-thirds of your, a third of your book is zoning, usually. So that's good, it's the most questions. So then having somebody that can kind of focus on those, then you can pick them off and say, hey, these go to, sorry, Mike, these go to my, or the animals and the gaming and this, they go to whoever. So it, it's a good way of organizing it, taking it. When that's all, the questions are answered and acknowledged and gone, comes back to us, and we will do a draft, all right? This is what the code's gonna look like, but you get another shot to take a peek. Maybe something changed. Now that you read it, you don't really like the way that sounds. And we, we go through, and then we make the, the changes. And it sort of comes back, the electronic version, Ecode 360, is created, and we provide you with a local law, whatever, one of 26 or however it is, we provide you with that local law, bring it to the board, adopt it at that point. So the nice thing about that is that you're adopting the code as a whole versus individual pieces all the way through the, this situation. So that is pretty quick, but that's an idea of how the project works and, and what we, what we do for that. And you receive books, the Ecode is up. I do Ecode training for municipal employees. We work, it's, it's a link, the Ecode is a link from your website. Village Code is a good idea, right up there at the top, and that way residents can come in, constituents, click on that and maybe answer some of their own questions before they come in and, you know, ask the clerk. Some other things I, I get excited about, Ecode's 15 years old. We're the first ones to come out with an electronic version of, of municipal codes. Hard to believe that it's that. And it's evolved. And some of the nice things about that, that the Ecode are is residents can look things up. If they think they got it, they call in, the clerk then can find the section, print off the, the appropriate information, a PDF, they can come pick it up, they could get their email address, email that section directly from, you know, the clerk could do it. There's the ability to print to PDF, there's also the ability to print to Word. Would you wanna do that? Nobody can change the code, okay? I have to make that apparent, too. There's something there called multi-code search. Municipal employees will get a login, and you can have as many as you want, it doesn't cost more. There's municipal multi-code search. Say you've got new legislation coming about, you haven't done it before, you don't know what, you don't know where to begin. You could actually go into multi-code search, search every code subscriber to Ecode that we have, which is a lot. There's 710 in New York now. Hoping for one call before I got here. Let's just use drone, all right? You could go in and search all the villages, break it down, all the villages in New York. Then you could go over and search within 100 miles of this county. Then you can narrow it down and see there's 50 of them. Type in drone, but we also need to think, maybe we better put in unmanned aircraft, and it will search all the codes within that parameter. Let's say it's 100 miles from, this zip code. You can go in, pull up the code, you like that one, download it to Word, cross off Dryden, and put in Lansing, take it to the attorney, take it to the board and say, here's our legislation on drones.
That's a great question.
Yes, you can.
You're talking about searching, and I guess drones is a good example. Can you do Boolean searching?
Yes.
Boolean searching. Oh, Boolean.
With...
My, my old life of Westlaw. There's, there's all sorts of, you really don't have to, there's much simpler ways of doing it. Like I, I showed this this morning, dog license. Well, dog license pulls up everything with dog and everything with license when you type in the search. All right, we get marriage license, you get everything else. But if you put the word and in, you get them connected.
And proximity?
Yes.
I mean, if you're using Boolean, I'm, I'm familiar with Lexus and Westlaw, so it's, I don't know, I find it a lot easier to find what I want using that synergy.
There's all sorts of, yes, it's capable, there's advanced searching features in Ecode that you could just go all of these words, but not these words and all, so it's, it's come along.
Or you can write your own search.
Right.
Thank you.
So the, the other thing with Ecode, as I mentioned, it's got so much to do, and I, I do the training and I don't charge, and I come on site 90%, 90% of the time and do lunch and learns or before board meetings or whatever. Also with that subscription, it comes with a app. You can all do it, and I've had it, I wouldn't be surprised, a lot of people go right on the, their App Store, and it's Ecode Search. And you can pull it up, and you'll have access to every subscriber's Ecode site that we have. So you say, it's in the back, so hey, look, Cuba has it, or whatever. That's the project. I have spelled, I did include in here a timeframe. Nobody's going to jail if you don't make the 120 days of review and whatever, but it just keeps things on track. I've had code projects, especially with the binders, get out of, I mean, it's 79 years and we've got that. So we don't want that to happen, so we've given you kind of a schedule. I've put the pricing in here. I've put in here what, what we're gonna be reviewing and what we've, we've got. There's an optional component that we now have the capabilities of, you may have seen. We can go through and do the code in gender-neutral language. You never know where the discussion's going with that, but enough said that we can, we can do that of your, of your new code. And that was, that is an additional component, it's, it's optional. So I think I did put in here a list of other municipalities that, whose codes we do, I didn't take them all, but, you know, in relatively close counties around you, to give you a little idea. And then there's some additional, some additional solutions that we have, but again, I, I don't wanna get into them. You may find, you may hear something, especially with the town, because they're looking at something called MapLink. It's an interactive zoning map. It ties to your electronic code. We take your GIS shape files, and we create the map of the village. We get all the parcel information. It's not a GIS, and I get, that's the biggest, like, it's not, it answers two questions is what it does. One, what can I do with my property? And two, where can I open a business? So if you just bought a house, realtors love this. If you bought a house and you wanna see it, you've got all the information, tax information, ownership information, setbacks, dimensional standards, and you wanna put a hair salon in the basement, type that in, it'll say, yes, you can, but you need six parking spaces, it can't be more than two stories, blah, 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 all that information. The other thing you can do is type by land use, I wanna open a, a title store, and it will show the districts where that's allowed.
That's good.
MapLink, that's all, that, that's a, that's a separate thing, but again, something that has been real popular and asked a lot of questions about. So I'm sure I forgot something, but...
Yes, kind of jumping back to that question I asked, about searching, and that, you're able to do that search across codes, like, say, look at, say you wanna look, again, drones and unmanned aircraft, and you wanna do a particular search, and you, you could expand the universe not just to, say, the village code, but to, what, all village codes in New York if you want, or select, select certain ones?
Sure. You can go through, and that's through this multi-code search tool. You have to log in to do it. You have to be logged in, and I recommend all municipal employees be logged in, you know, and, and I have a lot of clerks that don't log in because they're so busy, they're usually trying to answer a question on a fence or a shed, and they just answer it and they're not, and there's a lot they can do with that. So, yeah, you can go in, multi-code search, you could search the entire code, all 4,000 of them, be ridiculous, but state of New York, you got 700, I just told you. You can break it down by county if you wanted to, you could break it down by town, village, city, you could search them all, and then type in your search term, and, and away you It's a fun feature, so. I, I don't know, I think, I don't know how...
Yeah, no, that, no, I think that's great. I know that there are, I know that there are some questions, I don't know if they were all answered in the presentation, but if anybody wants to start with a question you might have?
So you said 120 days, yeah, how long approximate? I mean, we're small.
I've done them as quickly as 18 months. It's not, did you see the, the chart there? It's on page 13. That's the performance and payment schedule. And again, it, I'd say it goes, they go over two, two budget periods, which is nice, because we don't charge upfront, okay? We charge, it's 20%, I think is, or 20% I put within 30 days of the agreement being signed, should you move forward, and 20% when we get that organizational analysis, the chapter thing is, is done. And, you know, it's spelled out this many days, and these are business days, so you get a little idea. I've done them as quickly as 18 months, and I've had them go on. Things happen, things change in a municipality, things, you know, different people become in charge. in charge. The clerk in Oegle, just, she just retired, and she was my point person, and this is a recodification that we're doing with her, but she's set it up, we got a new person, I knew she was retiring ahead of time, and I think we're going to be okay, but it'll, it may slow it down a little bit, just because it's going to take her time to review, and we're going to go through the code review process again, that online tutorial thing that I told you I do with some new people.
Can you talk about the process, so, say that recodification's done, everything's in the new format, and it's in e-codes, and like, everything's all set, can you talk about the process for either, you know, from the village's standpoint, working with General Code about what it would look like if we want to amend, we've amended a local law, what do we provide you, or we've got this new local law, what do we provide you, and like, just walk through that process?
Yeah, and that's a key, key point, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's important to realize that you're spending money on this, and then just to have it die, or not update is, that's a problem. When you adopt legislation, clerk or code enforcement maybe sends it to New York State Department of State, after. Believe it or not, although you don't know, you're still going to send that via mail. At that time, they will certify it, or you can say they got it, and you send it to me, General Code. I have an email address set up, the legislation can be sent in electronically, imagine that. And it goes into our supplementation team. Within 48 hours, that legislation is up in e-code under a tab called New Laws. So it comes into e-code, it goes right up on your e-code within 48 hours, and our editors will take a quick peek at it to see what chapter it affects, and they put a little notation, it's a gavel out there. So when people are using e-code, they're reading whatever, and they see all of a sudden out, there's this little gavel on that chapter, you scroll over it, it says, this is the code, but there's been recently adopted legislation, check New Laws. They go over to New Laws and open it up right there from the, you know, as the bare-bones adopted legislation. I recommend, and I do this all the time now, I, all my clients, I put on a schedule, an updating schedule. Some do it every other month, some do it quarterly, some do it once a year, I don't, you know, whatever, just so it keeps everybody kind of keeping an eye on it. If you chose once a year, and you didn't have any legislation in 2026, you wouldn't do anything, okay? The other piece that I provide is to provide you with estimates. So let's say we're on a quarterly schedule, right, there, and five local laws come in, I send out an estimate of the, estimate of the cost, it's a range to codify this and update the books and the e-code. I just, I don't like surprises, you know? Too many times, people don't have an estimate required, and they do a comprehensive plan and change a whole zoning chapter, and they get, so, let us send you an estimate of what it is, you approve the estimate, we begin the work. Okay, so that's, that is, it's an ongoing updating supplementation, whatever you want to call it, charge, and it's all, I don't know what the cost is of that, because I don't know how much legislation or the size of the legislation.
Can you just kind of give an estimate?
I can look up, I can find a.
I mean, I'm curious, what the addition, I mean, let's pick something simple, like the tree law, right?
Okay.
Say, let's just say, well, you know it's not going to happen, but just say, after 18 months, and you have everything in order, and then all of a sudden, we're like, we just updated our tree law, and we give that to you. Do you, based on?
It's time and materials.
Number of words, how many pages it is, like.
It's time and materials, so the editors are the ones that they go through and they scope it, and then they go, this is this, and then this is for the code analysis piece, this is for duplication, this is for shipping and handling, you know, and that's broken out and these types of things. It's just so hard for me to, you know what I can do?
I mean, I'm trying, like, you know, a few thousand dollars to, or $5,000?
It shouldn't be, no.
Okay.
I'd say between, I can't even tell you, but I can find out what I will do.
I think that's a big question.
And so this is, and so what he's talking about, right, is, here's a brand-new law, we pass this legislation, they need to get that into, into the right format, into the platform, and into everything.
So every time you update the sewer ramps?
Right.
You will apply a new chart, so.
So.
So how many, how many do we have in a year?
We had seven in 2024.
I was about 10, I would say max, probably.
About 10.
There was more.
To get a discount if you have more than five.
Well, and the code online is not a 2002 code, the code online on the website is up to date to our last pass.
On the Village Lansing website.
I just want to make that clear. Yeah. So it had, Jody does incorporate all the local laws that are passed into the code, so that's an up-to-date code online that we have.
I believe, I went to the disposition list, the last thing on the disposition list was 2002.
Well, the disposition list may be outdated, but the actual code is up to date, I just want to make that very clear for everybody.
Then that's going to take.
I guess not. I was, I was thinking, so is there anything that we can do on our own, I guess that really screws everything up, doesn't it, if you do that?
I feel like you go all in, or.
All, yeah, exactly. Do it or don't, binary choice here.
Okay.
Pricing, updating, I'm sorry, because I don't want to not give you an answer, I will look at every other municipality in New York that is your size by population, and I will take a look and see how much they've done the last five years, and give you an idea of, hey, based on, and you may be more, you may be less, it'll give you an idea.
So if this price estimate was based off the assumption that the code online had not been updated since 2002, now knowing that it has actually been updated through Local Law 7 of 2024, would that change the estimated price?
It's still going to be evaluated, I'll revisit it, but it's all going to be reviewed as the same, I've even added the additional legislation in there, and.
Just a question.
The disposition, it throws me off that the disposition list isn't up to date if the code is being updated, but.
I know the code is being updated, so.
I feel better.
Yes, oh, I, yeah, well, I have my own question, but I wasn't real clear in your answer to Natalie's question, where, I think she asked, given that apparently the code has been updated relatively recently, would that, would that change the price? You know, I realize you can't give numbers, but would it?
I'll add to the, and say, hey, this is updated through now, they're still going to read, they're going to evaluate everything, they're going to go back and evaluate the 1996 code, because I wouldn't, I did it, it's close, it's our style, it's everything, so it's.
So, sounds like what you're saying is whether it's 2002 or more recent, given the history, the historical research you have to do and review, the price would be roughly the same.
Yeah, I don't see a change.
Is that, is that accurate, or?
We're going to go, we're going to review the whole code, no matter.
And then I just, I had a couple of questions, you know, referring to your sample page here.
What page?
I think it's page 21.
21?
21. So, okay, I mean, it's nice that you see, you know, you have the note, for example, amended 3/20/1995. Do you, will you list, do you list all the amendments? Let's say that section's been amended, you know, four times.
Yeah, always.
Yes, it shows the history of through, there is something now that we have called track back, which is brand-new, we can take all the legislation and track back all the legislation through, nobody's really doing that with me so far, they're starting going from this point forward, so a newly adopted legislation will always be trackable going forward. So, but yes, the histories will be on here, it'll show the superseded, the amendments, and all that.
Would it, would you be able to, like, through a click or somehow or other, be able to see, like, the older version?
There is an archival piece where, whatever codes we have, you can go in to the archive code, archive code.
Well, let's, let's, let's look at the sample page, for example, section 204-2. It says, okay, amended 3/20/1995 by ordinance, whatever, so you can go in and, you know, see what the ordinance was, and would you be able to actually read the preceding version of it, so you can see what the changes were?
Only if it was in, the code that we had was archived. If we had the whole code archived, we'd be able to go see that and look that up, but that just gives you the reference to what it was and when it was changed.
Okay, so the actual text, so the project that you're, have proposed to the village, would that include archiving?
Oh, I don't.
Any, any existing codes we have, we would have archived in e-code.
So, for example, if this were with the village, one would be able to go in and see the language of the preceding versions? Am I right on that, or am I misunderstanding?
Nope, I just provided that I have that code, so I guess, I know I have a 96 code, and I've got a 2024 code. We would have those two codes in archival capacity.
Yeah, sometimes you got to walk it all language.
Oh, I understand, and that's the beauty of the, of the whole track back that we didn't do before, because somebody comes in and says, yeah, you're writing me up for that shed, what was the code in 1986 when I put the shed in? I get it, so, yeah.
Other questions from folks up here?
So if I go online to, like, one of the people that you're, like, the town of Ithaca or, we will see, is the format always the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the example page that we were looking at of code codification model.
So that, it kind of, if you go from town to town, it's easy to understand and.
Right. I had, there's other codifiers, not many anymore, because we bought them, but, and they have different styles, we'll call it, or different whatever, but I, when I find those, or they convert over to General Code, it's in this style that you're seeing.
Okay.
Does the, does the software or the provisions, or, you know, when people are, the editors are looking at it, is there some provision to make sure that consistency is enforced throughout? So, for example, if we mention, like, we introduced a new zoning district at one point, commercial medium traffic, and it was definitely in the piece of legislation that we submitted, and it's in the book, were there some other places in the code that it maybe didn't get updated? Is there anything, you know, service-wise or things like that, to make sure that it's updated throughout the code, as opposed to just saying, oh, well, yep, here's the legislation you gave us, it's in the right format, we're shoving it in there, and forget about it anywhere else in the code?
That's why the editorial analysis piece takes so long, because they're going to, they're going to pick up on all of that, and they're going to have a question on it or whatever, and you can say, hey, good catch, General Code, or, no, that needs to be this way, been there, and whatever it is, so, every one of those, which sometimes make it look like there's a lot of questions when it gets done with the editorial analysis, or when they prepare the editorial analysis. But that's the whole point, is taking and going through and looking for inaccuracies and inconsistencies between chapters, state law, everything comes into play, and they pick that up and out of it.
Kathleen, I know that you had mentioned some questions that you had, maybe they were already all answered, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you covered most of them, I just had a couple others, one is just for, from a user point of view, the public user point of view, accessibility for disabled.
Okay, 508 compliant, and making improvements all the time. Somebody with a club hand the other day was, you know, came up, and you had to use a computer, but yes, all of that's been addressed, good question.
Page 17, you list all these other options, that's awesome.
Those are the premium e-code features?
So, we have a law, here are the links.
Everything is.
And the alert, all of that's included.
Everything's included in that, that, that rate.
And multiple languages, how about, could you elaborate a little bit on the PubDocs module for public versus private?
Love to. PubDocs is another feature of eCode. You can include your meeting minutes, agendas, budgets, comprehensive plan, you can put anything in there you want, okay? And it's over in the PubDoc section, and you got to go out and actually get the file and bring it back in, you know, so that it's there, and then it becomes a part of the search mechanism. So if you're typing, if you're searching for something, and you don't see it in the code, you don't see it in the New Laws section, but, ah, there's something in the public documents in the last meeting. So something was mentioned at the meeting, it was collected, it was gathered there, and it comes up in the search.
So you can cross-reference, and then for town exporting, okay, so are there different tier levels of reviews? So, some is for public viewing, some is just internal?
Oh, I see.
For the pub, oh, that's a different, he hit me on PubDocs, we're all PubDocs, okay? So PubDocs is viewable by, oh, so the, I think what you're talking about with the, there's the ability to make notes throughout the code. I, my codebook back in the day was loaded with sticky notes, everything here, I'm always into this section, always here, this and this and this, so there's the ability to make notes, same type of thing, in e-code. You can have notes that you just have private every time you open up, you log in and open it up, those are your notes. You could have, the planning board could make notes on certain sections, and you could share it amongst yourselves only, so anybody that was labeled could do that, or you can make the notes public, and then anybody can see them and access them, and they can be taken up, and they can be taken down.
I'm going to go back to PubDocs for one second, just because we jumped to this too, but with PubDocs, so, and I'll just use meeting minutes as an example, so, we have the ability to kind of switch between whether it's private or public, so could we put draft meeting minutes up there in a private fashion until we've all approved them, and then switch it over to private, or, I'm sorry, switch it over to public, right? We generally don't distribute them out until we've all approved them, but I was just thinking.
Usually it's the clerk that does, goes and gets the minutes once they're finalized, and they're in, they're stored somewhere, maybe they're on the website already or wherever, but you have the ability to go get those. The one thing, I did this with Brockport, she used to send them to me all the time, she'd go, Todd, I need my PubDocs up every three years, and I go, you got to stop, you know, and I said, there's a, there's a way you can do this yourself, you can get a piece of software from me for $200, and we can bulk upload them at once, or you can get a kid from the college across the street, come over here all summer and put these things in one at a time, you know, drop and drag, drop and drag, and that's what she did, and I, I got a feeling that young lady will never work in municipal government again, because she just spent the whole summer on an internship doing dragging and dropping, but their public documents are up there. The nice thing is that when you're doing like a multi-code search, if you were looking for something obscure, and you're going through, and you say, boy, I really like what Truensberg has done, and, or with their code, and they, you look, and they don't have anything in their code on that either, but they addressed it at the last board meeting, and they had a local law in the New Laws or whatever, and you get, you get access to that.
Is there additional cost for uploading things into PubDocs, or no, because we can do it ourselves, basically?
No, you have the ability to create, you know, add the PubDocs. I'm just saying, a lot of times when people go, wow, that's really great, I want all my minutes up there, going out and grabbing a file all the time, as I have.
Yeah, 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 oh, for sure.
Turn it on.
Yeah, somewhat of a.
Potentially silly question. Is this called premium e-code suspension? Is there a non-premium suspension?
I have not, I have not instituted a non-premium, there's.
This makes it seem like there's a separate, there's a law.
I even thought that maybe this was a different one than what we've been talking about, that all of this was an extra.
I don't recommend the other ones. It's, there's a, there's a standard.
So there's a lower version.
E-code, it's $200 less a year, and you don't get access to, like, downloading to Word and PubDocs, and things like that are taken out, but I'm more happy to, and most of the time, most of the time, I'm upgrading people from light, or whatever it was, to premium to get these, get these. I just, I don't think it's a viable.
You said the only difference between, let's say, standard or base level and what you call premium is $200 a year?
Yeah.
Oh.
And that's this list here?
Those are all the things you do.
Have you had a lot of municipalities opting in, or using the, the, the gender, gender, neutral service that you're offering, or just curious?
It seems to me like, it, it hasn't been a big expense, and people think, I don't wanna do all that. I, I just, yes, put it, do it. I had one supervisor, when we were in this stage, saying, I would say, what do you think? But he goes, we don't need that. But the code enforcement officer said, you know, Joe, the other night, council person, so-and-so got a little upset that she was referred to as a councilman. And he goes, oh, I didn't know. So, I mean, those are some, to avoid some of those types of things, maybe you consider it, but if it's not, not anything that's mandatory, or by law, you have to do.
And out of, you know, you listed a bunch of, I'll just call them references there. What's the, what's the kind of most recent one, closest to us, where you've implemented your services, you know?
Right.
It's a.
Yeah, let's look at the list.
There's a whole big list there, but I wasn't sure, you know, if you just knew off the top of your head who.
I'm thinking between, didn't have a code, and we're doing a new code, and a recodification, which has had an existing code, we got out of date, or whatever. And then the ones that are good, I got somebody who's going right now.
Well, if you think about it, you know, just send me, if you can email me, you've got my email address.
Newport, they just signed, Truensberg is in process, but they didn't have a code. Ithaca, town of Ithaca is going.
The Village of Diden just did it through general code.
Yes, they did. And Candor, I dropped off stuff today. Canvy is in a code project right now, you know, in the second verse of the stage.
Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
You guys is, they've been a long.
They've been on for a while.
Big process with the village of Diden.
Okay. Kathleen?
So, so basically all the premium that kind of is part of it, and the extra, the extra of MapLink, and mutual export, et cetera.
Export. Oh, wow.
And, you know, integrate it into your existing systems, such that you can.
I, I do get that, it's come up a lot lately. What she's asking for is how, can, can they get a file of the code, eCode, to work with an existing, you know, software? Police stations right now are getting their own software, countywide, this and that, and they want access to the code. Most of the time, it's just to have the police stuff. We can do that, we can provide it in a CSV file, an Excel file, we send it out. It's $695, and then every time the code is updated with the sections they need, it's $250. So, that usually doesn't come up at this point. We also have now an API.
I was just gonna say, are, are there, are there a lot of municipalities that are using the API to get that information out into their systems?
The API is relatively new from our, on our site, within the last year or two, and I think it's finding out, but no, that's a real simple process. Put it into CivicGov, or something, and Bass, and I guess our admins now. But yeah, there's, it's a simple API key we provide, and that we, we give you the access.
Okay, so it's, it's, so it's, the development on the API doesn't have to be done by somebody on your team. We have the key, and we could use it, if we have the expertise here, to integrate with wherever we need it.
You needed that, you wanted the code.
It's an applic, it's an application programming interface. It's a way to get all the data you want out of the system, without having to say, here's an updated spreadsheet, here's another updated spreadsheet.
It's an automatic link that just feeds, and anytime there's a change to your code, it gets into that software.
Do you have any questions, Kathleen?
Oh, my goodness.
The, the other thing she's referencing are the, the additional things that we offer. I just put it in there. MapLink is, is the same style, same format as, it's based on the number of your population. Okay, what related, so this and that, and then it comes out, and it has population, and probably, 10,000 or 10,000.
Oh, okay.
You can scratch that, Kathleen, I know what you were thinking.
I'm sorry, track back.
Track back is $250, and that's the, the track back starting going forward. And then it bumps your eCode annual up to $300. Some of these are new products.
How many maps can you link for $10,000? Is there a limit on how many maps you have?
It'd be, we, we're creating a map.
So it would just be one map?
A map of your village.
And that's it?
Which is?
10,000?
Yeah, but it's not just, it's not just, here's our map, it's here's a map with all the metadata underneath it that's in the code. So if you wanna see this overlaid on the map, versus this overlaid on the map, yeah.
Like, if we decided to put?
If we decided to have a trail map of all the trails in the village, would we be, would that be an overlay on our map?
One of your districts?
Yeah.
It would be throughout the districts, actually.
Yeah, it's involved.
All your zoning districts, and all your. Jerusalem is, they're just above, they're Kukalake, Branchport. They've been a longtime subscriber of MapLink, and they love it. And it's mostly lake, and.
Yeah.
Chi-Lai has four school districts, and all this other stuff, and, and they, they use that. Village of Portchester, right there, and again, I'm not picking the MapLink either way, but it, it is a pretty cool tool. Village of Portchester has a really good site, and it links through your eCode. So if you're in something in eCode on swimming pools, and they have, and you had MapLink, it would link you right over into, into MapLink, and back and forth. Same thing, it's a link from the website, and Rieta's doing it right now, and she's made me promise I'll train 12 people, which I didn't, but they're all realtors that she wants to keep out of her office on a daily basis. So, they now have access, and they can find out what can be done with that property that they're selling before they come in about it.
Other questions?
The dancing's looking, the town, the town's been looking at, and Town of Ithaca has it, but they just haven't launched it.
Lorraine, did you have other question, or any questions?
No.
I can't, I can't think of any right now.
No, I'm good.
You may only shake her head now, Michael and Natalie?
Reach out to me with it, if something come, I mean, it happens all the time. You'll go, I wish I'd asked that guy before he left, something. Just reach out, like I said, I, I'll get back with you, I'm on the road all the time, but I will, I will be doing code projects tonight in my hotel.
And Susan, did you have anything, I didn't forget about you. They're muted.
She's still muted. Can you unmute her?
I'm unmuted now. I did, I don't have any more questions, thank you, Todd.
Awesome, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
Try driving to the next place you're driving to.
Headed down to Association of Towns in New York City.
There you go. Okay, next item on the agenda is other business tree law discussion.
Okay.
I'm guessing Lisa and Lorraine are gonna take it away on this one for a second.
Of course, you know, the more you get into this.
Oh, yeah?
Ah. So.
Do you, does anybody want this up on the screen? I know we all have printed copies, do you have a copy, Emilio, or do you want it up? You're good?
I can't hear.
I have one.
She's good.
Oh, I, well, I had emailed.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
I think it's easier, because it's, you can't pick it from.
No, you actually, you can't, no, you can't.
It's pretty tiny, I mean, I can't even see the people's names. So basically, this is the one we've been working on since the, but we tried to take into consideration everything we heard from David and Athena, from the landscape. And so it's, it's, what's the step, in purple, basically, is the ones that we're still thinking.
Yeah, questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Gotta kind of get some direction. We, we can sit, we get pretty bogged down, but then it's like, I'm saying, I think we need to go back and see what, what you think. But this is what, this removal of more than 25% seems to be a little problematic.
It's gonna be very difficult to keep track of how many trees somebody took down over three years.
I know, and three years gone.
I mean, as sure as possible, you can probably take a whack at it, but still, it's gonna be difficult to quantify.
And I think David even mentioned, and you know, then, and, and you know, what if they moved to 25? This, what if, what if they go over 25% in year one, and then, yeah, how are we gonna enforce it? And I, I think, you know, it's like, so what was the objective here?
Prevent clearcutting.
Exactly, to prevent clearcutting. So, one of the words that I came across was, and I realized after we, I think I was looking at something else, was no net loss. Is there something about that, that we could incorporate, like, no net loss?
I think that, I'm thinking big projects?
Yeah, you're gonna have a net loss.
No. Like Uptown Road?
Yeah.
How about? Clearcutting is forbidden.
But I mean, but right, but then there's a mechanism, that there's a mechanism in place to help, you know, offset that, but.
Well, I mean, what do we, if, you know, what's our objective, and what can, what can we really enforce that makes this useful? Because if we're not gonna enforce it, what's the point? People just gonna say, oh, they're not gonna enforce this. But, but I mean, this whole tree law came into effect because of clearcutting over on Dart Drive. And so how are we gonna stop that?
I mean, if that's our objective, then, I mean, we could just include language that says no clearcutting, but then we have to define what we mean by clearcutting.
Yeah, that's right.
And then that will still, you know, the comment was made, you know, hey, this makes it hard for, you know, there are certain projects, or a development, or whatever it is. I mean, I guess tech, right, I guess it depends on how you define clearcutting, then.
Well, because a lot of municipalities, you know, if we have, for example, what he was talking about, because that's what, every time we do something, you need, you start going tree laws, and I try to look for villages that are sort of our size, and of course, they're always wealthy, wealthy, small, near the city usually, and they have some fabulous codes that I kind of like, but you have to be realistic about what we can do. And it's, yeah. So what do we, what do we really wanna do with this?
I had a, a thought about, you know, percentage in terms of number of trees means that you have to have a count of the trees, and you have to keep hold of that count. So, it's really, it's, and that's gonna be really difficult to do, especially when you have these lots that have, that are wooded lots. We could do percentage of area, so, you know, you can't clear more than, you know, X percent of your acreage. And then, you know, it, that would be much easier to calculate, because then you're, you're just looking at, you know, a GIS, and you can just, you know, make your little circle, or make your size, and calculate the area, or you can request that the, you know, architects, designers, landscape architects, you know, pull up calculations for you in their AutoCAD.
Do we then, I'm, I'm curious, going, going down that path? Not that I wanna like, you know, you know, go down this rabbit hole all night long, but, so we have other things where we've done something similar, and then we say, oh, but the buffer strip doesn't count, or, oh, this doesn't count, or, but that does count. So, I'm just, you know, if you say, you know, X percentage of that, are there exclusions to that? Like, do we, do we want to say, do we want somebody to come and say, okay, well, great, I can do this, I'm gonna clearcut everything in the middle of my property, and just leave it surrounded by the trees that were there? Does that cover the thing? Or is a buffer strip an exclusion? Or is it fine, because you did clearcut it, and you have what you need there?
Well, no matter what we do, we're gonna overlook something, it's what I call the sleep apnea syndrome, you know?
I think that it just, if the buffer strip is the only thing remaining, great, fine. They have to build in the middle, and then they're, put trees back in.
Well.
Oh, and that's the other side of it, they do have to still put things back in, you know? This is just the removal piece of it, there's the.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're gonna, I mean, but if you look at some of the lots around here, you know, in order for them to be used in a fashion in which they are zoned, that's a distinct possibility that you're gonna have to do that.
Well, you know, one of the other things that we talked about in April, remember when we talked about to the plantable area, once you take out the parking lot, building, blah, 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 whether we need a formula of some sort? Maybe that's in the appendix, I don't know, but, but anyway, we got hung up on this. So I think that's one thing we, we really need to be thinking about. And then, we basically, oh, yeah, because I think when we get to the minimum, on page two, minimum tree density. I'll look up, so maintain a minimum tree density of 30 tree units per acre. And then we said, this is where I was wondering whether we wanted to actually put a formula in there, where it says, for commercial applicants, the total site area shall exclude the minimum required parking square footage. What about for residential as well? We have that at two.
Yeah, it's the next one down.
Well, the residential one said, oh, shall also exclude, sorry.
Right.
I think also that, I was thinking maybe, after I looked at this later, was maybe to reorder some of these, so that the residential, you know that you don't have to do this if it's.
Buy up to the top?
Yeah. Where the total area, and they don't require, if, if there's no footprint change, you just bundle those together, so the residential. But, so the other one was, yeah, do we wanna put in, like, we had a formula like in April, where we literally just showed, you know, building minus, blah, 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 that was a visual. Would we put that in the appendix?
I would say probably safer to have in the, because it's, it's just an example.
Well, unless the calculation changes. The calculation is based on.
Well, that's what, well, right, that's what I'm saying, like, actually having an example formula in the appendix, like.
Then you couldn't change the appendix without local law, if it's based on the.
Right, yeah, I guess it, right, I guess it depends on what it says here.
Depends on what the appendix is demonstrating.
Yeah. If it's demonstrating, you know, I mean, exactly what's written here and wanted to.
For example, I mean, do we wanna put an example in the appendix?
Yeah, that's fine.
I would like that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think Emilio was trying to say something.
Uh, yeah, no, she said, she said she liked that idea. She was agreeing, yeah?
Yeah, although she, you're, she's hard up here, I think.
I know, I can't hear her very well today.
And then what was the one, okay, it was E. Why do we have this comment, the board should review these requirements? Oh, is this an agreement? I meant to look back, and I don't, my, the buffer strips, I think it is.
Oh, the reason that's highlighted, Lisa, is because of the decompact, yeah.
Okay, so.
Overlap with street trees and parking lots.
Yeah, I don't, it didn't have street trees, I didn't look up street trees. But I wanted to be sure, to, to, that all of this dovetails with buffer strips, street trees, and parking lots. Does it?
What do you think dovetails with?
Well, I mean, so that we're all in agreement, we're not contradicting it when I say, oh, and then I go to look at, I, I think I looked up buffer strips, but also when we get to street trees and things, that have we really double-checked that? I don't know.
I don't know if we got through them all.
Okay, and then down.
I do have a question, before we get too far, because you were just talking about how this interacts with other things. One of the things that we've talked about, potentially addressing, is parking minimums. And. I just wanna make sure that, so for, for residential, it's not such an issue, but for commercial, parking minimums are kind of a big deal. And the way that code writing is moving nationwide, is to actually get rid of parking minimums. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can write this, so that it doesn't become difficult if we do change the way we address parking? So I don't know, Natalie, if you have some sort of language suggestion, where we can address.
Parking lots?
Yeah.
I mean, shouldn't it just be as simple as reference that section when you're talking?
But if we get rid of the section, then we'd have to revisit how to calculate commercial applicants. commercial applicants.
Well, we've talked about that before, like, do we really need one and a half parking spaces for every, I mean, reducing parking when it's not needed, I mean, except for once a year, whenever.
I think it depends on the business you look at. Some things, absolutely. I mean, some places are really struggling following that formula, and other places, no.
No, well, you know, when we listened to, I, I attended that one online, where the guy, he, you know, saying, you know, get rid of parking, and people will stop driving to the places. And so, sort of, I said, well, you know, what if you need, what, yeah, he says, well, if you have a business that needs it, you should look somewhere else. That was kind of what he said, go somewhere else. And I'm thinking, well, the village can help, we got tons of parking right up here. But, at any rate, the parking lot thing, and then on three, I realized that when we were talking with David, he kept saying, don't use caliper, except for single deciduous trees. So, I didn't know, under tree planting plan two, E, all new trees to be planted will also be labeled and inventoried by, should I say, should we say tree units instead of caliper size? Where, where are we looking?
Bottom of page three.
Bottom of page three, the very last thing, C.
By appropriate size and species?
Tree units by appropriate size, or tree unit size, because-
All new trees to be planted will also be labeled, and you don't have to inventory by cat, but you can just say size.
Just size.
Yeah, because that way, whatever the size standard is, whether it's gallon, or, you know, DBH.
Container, yeah.
Yeah, will be applied to that particular tree.
Okay, and then, okay, so then, this was the general conditions, I guess, is where we made the most changes, based on what Athena and David talked to us about. So, we said, that all new trees shall have a minimum tree unit size as follows, and we incorporated single-stem deciduous, minimum blah, blah, conifer, minimum bald and burlap, and multi-stem deciduous, minimum six to eight bald and burlap. And that was what he recommended. And then, the tree unit value of new trees will be measured and determined by an ISA certified arborist hired by the developer. Oh, that's the same, I don't know what we have there. And then, we changed the shrubs. So, it's like, five shrubs maturing to over four feet tall, minimum number three size, is equivalent to one tree unit. Makes it a lot simpler, I think.
I like the addition of adding the language, saying what mature size needs to be.
Say again?
I, I like your addition of the language that includes the mature size of the plant.
That was David. I can, we can't take credit for that, but that's the beauty of having someone come and, and educate us. So, I think it's, it's a lot better. Now, one of the other things-
Well, wait, Lisa, hold on. So, for D, remember you and I talked about that we thought we needed to rework that? Are we good then with what we've got on there?
I think so.
Okay.
If everybody, is that clear to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a lot easier, isn't it?
Yeah, we have this question for Yamila down here. Yamila, did you see I added a question for you?
Oh, you know what, the, the version that I'm looking at doesn't have the little comments on the side, I'm just seeing the red line. So, tell me by, by number and letter where it should be.
Under four additional conditions for street trees and parking lot trees, down to number three, Roman numeral number three.
Okay.
Per 40 feet of road frontage. And we've got, check with Yamila, should it be 30 or 40?
Is 40 our standard, what we've-
We talked about 40. Yeah.
Is it 40?
That's what we talked about, yeah.
All right, never mind, we're good.
40 is, 40 is fine, I mean, you could, you could certainly do it closer and have, we could require 30, and people would just plant them a little closer together, and we'll have more trees.
It's a minimum of, so, yeah.
Yeah.
But we just were wondering whether there's another standard out there that maybe is different now. But, and also, I think up here, under, on three F, general conditions, we were going to suggest where possible new trees, just get rid of where possible. Why do we say where possible new trees shall be ecologically compatible? In fact, one of the things that our code says, I realized, on page 14519, of course, I don't have my code, that, it said suitable to site and climate. Do we wanna say something like that? Or is ecologically compatible with the site?
Ecologically compatible, yeah.
Okay, same difference.
All right, so we're gonna-
Get rid of where possible.
Forty feet, forty. Oh, so the only other thing, I think, that really, well, we, we changed status of ownership, parallel to the first time we said it.
Five?
I, I got, after listening to David, the talk about how important it is for commercial especially, to, about decompaction and scarification. So, I looked up ANSI A300, part six, and I'm, I think I emailed it to both mics, because I came across it. And there's a part two as well, which talks about decompaction. And I thought, as opposed to getting totally into this and making it complicated, maybe we could just reference that. And then, what I didn't have the time to do is understand whether we can, it's a PDF, but I wasn't sure whether we can pass it out without permission. It says, you know, the usual reprint stuff, but I thought I would call the tree association people that developed this, and ask them if we can just put it on our appendix.
Put a link to, yeah, well, yeah, whatever.
It would be, I don't know whether we need to bother, but, I mean, it's out there, and it's another, I think Westchester County has it in their code, but I don't know if they paid to put it up, you know, and I thought we should probably check, just to be certain. But I thought it was a, a good way to get around that. And it's very explicit in what you've gotta do.
Great.
So, I think-
Good kind.
And I didn't know, though, whether we wanted to mostly do that for commercial.
I think those, I mean, those were sort of, I think, I think it seemed like he was focusing on that area as we were talking about it.
I think, and-
Or larger projects, which, I mean-
Well, especially, the one topic that we haven't gotten into is improved versus unimproved lots. And what do we wanna do with that? Because this would be a situation where you have an unimproved lot, or you're improving a lot. But I don't know, that's a whole nother thing. And we haven't really researched it very much.
You know, I wonder, and I, I don't know the answer to this, but I wonder if there, it addresses clear cutting, it addresses unimproved lots, I wonder if there's a way where we can make some sort of, or if there's a precedent for some sort of calculation based on building size, and, you know, a parking or driveway size, where we can say, okay, so this is the square footage, and then add X percentage to that, and that's as much as you're allowed to clear?
I don't know.
That's a-
Unimproved lot?
I mean, that's assuming-
Our code officer is, is not fully, is mulling this over. Well, there's some still, some stuff to think about, that we really gotta pin down, though, before we, I don't wanna just keep chipping away at this, we gotta just decide some of this stuff. But every time we look at it, we come up with more stuff, that's what happens, you know? We're getting closer, but, yeah. So, look at some other-
I mean, I can try to look at other codes to see a definition of clear cutting, if we wanna use that for just unimproved.
Where are the definitions? You always say, oh, no, they're in there, but we don't have them as pertains to this, do we?
Beginning of zoning.
At the beginning.
Because it's not in the local law, the local law has them all at the front.
Yeah. So, we'd have to put clear cutting in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, definition of clear cutting. Yeah.
I, I actually do have another question. So, this is general conditions, so number three, B.
Page three.
Page four.
Four, yep.
Okay, so the tree unit value of new trees will be measured by caliper, as determined by certified arborists. So, does that mean that a developer's going to hire a landscape architect, or a landscaping company, and they're gonna come in and do the installations, and then they have to have a secondary certification of somebody coming in and measuring everything?
Wait a minute, what, what you said wasn't what I'm looking at.
Yes.
I think I'm looking at something different.
I think, I think the question, the question is the same, yeah.
I mean, she has caliper, caliper has been removed, but the question stands, do you wanna-
Determined by, the tree unit value of new trees, oh, I see what you're saying, will be-
So, if David comes in and plants the trees, do they, then need to get a different?
Oh, no, I was thinking, that would be determined, and then they will plant them.
So, but I'm saying, hypothetical situation, David Fernandez selects and plants the trees.
Yes.
Do they then need to get a third, a second person in there who's a certified arborist to measure them?
No, that was not, I don't think that was our intention.
Right, but that's how this sounds, yeah, it's, it's almost like a, you know, prior to planting, you know, the-
Oh, I, I was thinking it was prior to planting, before the plant was approved, so, then, then you're done.
So then, David makes a planting plan, then they have to send the planting plan to a certified arborist to measure, then it gets sent back to David.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, well, that's what that-
A tree, so.
To landscape architect, landscaper, needs to figure out who we are going to trust to measure the trees.
Oh, yeah, we went through this once before, didn't we?
And I felt we did land on allowing a landscape architect.
Yes.
Yeah, we did. And, but there are also situations where, like, you know, for instance, Northeast Pediatrics did not hire a landscape architect, they went directly to a nursery to do their installation. So, I guess the question is, who do we trust? Do we trust nursery installers? Do we, you know, do we trust, obviously, we, everyone trusts a certified arborist, but do we trust architects, engineers, landscape architects, and landscaping companies?
I think when we, Dan came from Plantsman, he said, all those people could-
Yeah, he did.
I think he also said at the same time, that it's real easy to go and be like, yeah, I'm, I took the course online, I'm not one of those, I don't actually have any experience. Some of them are easier to call yourself or be than others.
Again, are we talking commercial versus residential? Are we still work, is that still a problem?
I mean, it's not called out here separate.
No, that just says we selected group of trusted people, and those are the group of trusted people.
The other thing that, like, for instance, when I worked with the town of Ithaca on doing some work, they didn't specify who they trusted within their documents, they did have regulations about, like, what we needed to put in. But then there, they sent somebody out to do kind of a, you know, quick visual inspection. So, Mike, that would be kind of, you know, somebody in your role, walking around and saying, okay, yeah, that, they, they have the right number of trees here, and they seem to be about the right size. So, I don't know if, it, we can't put everything on mic, because unfortunately, we don't have a cloning machine. If we had two of you, that'd be amazing, but we don't. So, how, how, I guess the question is, you know, do we, do we have someone that walks around and says, oh, yeah, they did that right, in terms of the planting, or do we just have to trust that they've hired somebody who's appropriate?
I think at some point, you just have to trust the information that's given to you.
Yes.
Because you don't have the resources to have somebody go out and look at everything.
And we don't now, and after the next thing gets enacted, we still won't, and after that, right, there's lots happening in the village, and we're not increasing headcount, so, I mean-
Aren't they gonna, don't they come, have to come and get it approved, their tree planting plan?
Yes.
Yeah, but still, this, who is going to tell us?
The tree unit value of the new trees?
And the existing trees.
Well, it's gonna be the, on the design, isn't it, the landscape?
Well, yeah, but who is gonna put it on the design? Like, who's gonna make the measurement to put it on the design?
Right, so we can require a designer, whoever it is, to submit a little sheet that says, here are the trees, and then they, you know, they usually have their, like, what David showed us, that has, you know, the name of the tree, and a size, then a little column, that's the value.
Wasn't it, what, your neighbor, Zach, Zach, was that, didn't he have somebody come out, and there was somebody else too?
That was B, that was certified arborist.
It was.
And the B guy too, right? We-
But I don't know if we wanna be so onerous, I think that was a law.
It was 150 bucks, he said.
What if we just say, the tree unit value of new and existing trees must be shown on the planting plan? And whoever makes the planting plan, puts it on the planting plan.
That sounds fun.
And refer them to our appendix wherever we have that, and, and ask them to calculate that.
Yeah, and you can always look at it, or Mike can look at it, or somebody can look at it and say, hey, that doesn't seem right, right?
Can you say that again, Natalie, I'm writing it down?
The tree unit value of new and existing trees must be shown on the planting plan. The appendix H.
Yep, I already put that in.
So that's combining the B and C, and generalizing, yeah, the, yeah, okay.
Right. Okay.
There you go.
Sounds good.
And do we wanna say something about the C of existing trees over a certain size? Because we don't want them to count every single little thing.
Well, that's what the appendix H, I think, will say, existing trees under, count for nothing.
Yeah.
So, like-
We have our chart, which, again, was, was what David suggested, and we just lifted it.
Is it included in this?
No, of course not, because you already have it. I thought it would be all in one place, well. So, it was basically anything less than six inches, six inches, were zero tree units, for example. So-
For existing, what about new?
I guess we would go with our-
One and a half is standard, like, for a smaller sized tree, like you might get for someone who's doing a DIY thing, and then two inches usually the, the base.
He said one and a half was even better, if it's a do yourself. He said, two inches, you really need heavy equipment to start moving around. He said you could manage, if you're strong, I think, with one and a half. But, which is, you know, why, a one and a half to two, this is the new ones, this was the, for example, this is what we put up here, all new trees shall have a minimum tree unit here. So, that was in A. All right, so, can we, can we just take this now, and, and stop taking the notes, and like, get it in a clean format?
Yeah.
And then, sort of start over a little bit, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense to me. So, we're gonna combine B and C into one, right?
All right, and let's see if we can add a definition of clear cutting that seems reasonable. And I'll see if I can find, I was gonna say, access, don't you? I was gonna, so you wonder how to look for unimproved lots, would you? Well, we might, well, if we're gonna say, instead of 25%, clear cutting is forbidden in the village unless authorized by somebody, because that, sometimes, you know, a lot of them require a permit, for one places, permit, if you're gonna want to remove a certain amount of trees from your property. Not that you can necessarily, but-
Exactly the right way to do it, I think you're, you're spot on. You should just say, clear cutting is not allowed unless specified during the, you know, during the site plan review process.
Okay. So, we had, we had two more things.
But then we have to have a cause and effect.
We'll see what other, other people have.
Right.
What was the second one? Oh, was the undue hardship one?
Yeah, we were wondering if we could-
Remove the whole sentence?
Do we get rid of it?
Where was this one?
Um, page five, down towards the bottom, the undue hardship.
Oh, undue hardship. Oh, undue hardship. Oh.
Just all requests must be submitted and approved by the planning board.
And then get rid of the rest?
Approval will be made upon the determination that.
Oh, yeah, undue hardship. What is undue hardship? Oh, my mother's sick and my dog needs a.
It turned out with Northeast Heights that our formula wasn't quite right for their lot.
Yeah.
Can we just get rid of this and?
Yeah, we can just get rid of it.
And then you have one on the last page about, do we need to name specific committees?
Yeah.
Bottom of page six, B.
It carries, it carries over to page seven.
Oh, I mean.
Oh, yeah, change, climate change initiatives in the event no tree planting projects can be identified. Do we want? Oh, I think we might still want something. I know.
Probably have to keep part of this.
Something in there, yeah, climate smart communities.
You know, we're working on that.
Who is that? Is that a committee? I mean, is that people?
Well, it's part, the trustees are.
The trustees?
Yeah, they, I mean, climate smart, it's not, it's not a Village of Lansing thing, it's a state thing.
Oh.
Yeah.
But, you know, so you, you know, do take certain actions to become a climate smart community. Gives you some access to bring up some things. So in the event no tree planting projects can be identified by, I said by the village even, just say the village.
We give the money to the Village Greenway Committee, so then that has to change. The Village Greenway Committee will identify areas that the village needs to benefit from, so.
Does the Greenway Committee know this? That's what I'm.
I don't know that we've had any funds.
I was going to say, I guess we should check with the Greenway Committee.
That's Carolyn, right?
Are you on the Greenway? Ronnie? Huh, I'll check. I'm getting tired. Okay. But, yeah, we were thinking just.
I mean, wherever, yeah, not, like especially on the very end as you call out, like, you know, like the whole goal of achieving, maybe that's too much. Maybe that part, the kind of last part of that can be taken off and just say, like, unlike from a lot of what's on page seven can go like. In the event that no planning projects can be identified, blah, 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 maybe, you know, initiatives to be funded must have the, maybe that is just.
Must have the goal of achieving, blah, blah, get rid of it? I don't know what exactly was intended by this.
I, I think the intent was like, hey, if, if there are funds there and there's things that need to be happened, like tree planting is like, oh, that street tree died. We've got some funds to replant it. Let's say every, there's no possible way that we can plant trees anywhere, right? There had to be some sort of mechanism to be able to use the funds on something if we couldn't use it on a tree. How realistic is that? Probably not very. I mean, we have parks all over the place, we can buy. So, yeah, I would, yeah.
And then you can use. I would even just leave all climate change initiatives identified in the plan.
So keep the very last sentence?
Yeah.
So keep this last all climate change off to the end?
I mean, I even got rid of the tree bank funds may be used for, I got rid of that.
Okay, there, and then you, you deleted, she deleted the top three lines, Lorraine.
Climate change initiatives.
And then, well, I'm, I'm, we're on page seven, sorry.
Oh, wait, top three lines of page seven?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So, and on the page, climate, in the event no tree planting projects can be identified by the village?
Well, we give the money in first to the Greenway Committee. So if it's the village and you have to take A.
Oh, I see.
It goes up here in first, it goes to.
Okay, so I got to check with Ronnie that they, they're aware of the fact that they're supposed to.
They're, they're headed the tree.
They have this responsibility.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll decide what to do. Good.
Good.
And then we'll, we'll put together the appendix.
Yeah.
And then I have to report, I think, quick.
Yes, next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
Okay. So there were minutes, there was public comment, nothing came up there. John Dennis presented a resolution regarding cargo, but it was denied by the trustees. He's concerned about collapsing what. Then there was the, setting the public hearing for the subdivision of land. Kathleen had some questions. She was concerned that somehow this was taking away the responsibility or privilege of the planning board to make some decisions. But I think it was resolved to your satisfaction.
The public hearing was set.
Yes, but she was questioning about, you know.
Yeah, Peter said there was discussion.
Yeah. And then there was this interesting resolution, speaking of climate smart. So it's called, consider the resolution promoting shaded areas in public places.
Okay.
Of which we were unaware here. So it was a real resolution. Basically, the objective, as it turns out, because it wasn't quite clear, is to move us towards being a climate smart community so that perhaps we can access some grant funding. But it was basically saying shaded areas in public places provide important community, public health, physical health and safety, mental health, and environmental health benefits. And whereas the village board believes natural and built shaded areas in the village provide important community benefits and pets during times of hot or inclement weather, and so on. And so there was some discussion about this. Wolfgang was saying, well, it just makes common sense. But, you know, common sense, as we know, is not real common. So at any rate, it was, it was passed, but there was some discussion. And first, I think, and John Courtney questioned, I said, but you know, this is, this is only talking about on village property, which I think was getting lost in the conversation initially. Because I said, we got, we're working on the tree law, but.
With the park.
This is, yeah, this basically is village property where I suppose a right of way and everything in that regard. So, but they did pass that. So once it was kind of explained that, yeah, there, the reason we would care to do this, even though it does make great sense to just provide shaded areas would be to move closer to climate smart community. So that was kind of it.
Great.
And there's no meeting next Monday because of our meeting day.
Okay, no.
The shortest, I got the long, oh, was it President's Day?
Yeah.
We already have March.
Yeah, January, January.
What month is this?
February.
2024? Yeah.
Well, you have the floor, other things you want to bring up?
Yeah, there was some, oh, yeah, well, I had a code proposal, then we got the code proposal. East Point, number two, that's in the, they're not, they haven't come to us.
No, not going to have them.
When, when they do, you, it'll, you'll have, you sent a note out to all the butters?
Yes.
Yeah, by, by law, so, okay, so they'll know when it's on there. And Mr. Wallace, who was here with us.
Oh, yeah.
I had sent you the note too.
Yeah, everyone will.
He had some good points. But one of the things I think you mentioned was that the dog park, this came up at the meeting. The dog park at the current East Point has lighting that is not, it doesn't stay within the property lines.
No, wait, what? No, they, I live at East Point, by the way, just so you know. I've been there since like the very beginning.
So.
Does it say there's a light at Dog Park? I don't want to.
No.
We're talking.
So the.
But John Courtney didn't think there were lights at the.
No, there, there were our lights. At the dog park at East Point.
Yeah.
They have small lights around the, the gate, but they do have, they had a spotlight.
Uh-oh.
But they had it last winter, there was an issue and there was a short. And it shorted out a bunch of the lights. In fact, even some of our lamp posts in the property, they got that part fixed. But I don't think they've been able to get in there and fix the spotlight. So there's no spotlight back there.
That's probably good.
It used to be a motion detector one. So when you'd walk through, it would immediately come on. But there are small lights. I haven't been back there in a while, but there are small lights that are around like the fence.
Well, I just didn't.
So what was the issue with the lights?
Part of the original lighting plan or not? I just, I'm bringing it up because it came.
I think the lights that they put in at the dog park were an afterthought.
I think, I got that impression.
With people from Northwoods, there's a path back there and people going back and forth. And I think there were issues. And that's when they decided, they put a security cameras out there and the, the one lamp post. So it was an afterthought, it was not part of.
I'm just wondering when they get it fixed, whether it'll be in compliance with our lighting code is all.
Have you been over there, Mike?
Yeah, because John even mentioned it.
The only thing that I remember, I remember battling the lamp post.
I do too, remember.
But then they got new, then they got the new ones.
No, they weren't dark.
They've been a change of fuel.
Yeah, I remember you had.
Yeah, they're all, they're all new, well, they were all changed.
Pick your battle on that one. But, but John Courtney said, no, you know, they shouldn't have, he said, I don't think there were any, you know, lights authorized for the dog park. So keep that one's.
Yeah, so that was an afterthought.
The weather concerns.
Yeah.
But something to be thinking about.
Were you worried about the new, are they going to put a dog park in at the?
We don't know yet. No idea.
I listened to that presentation and I took a screenshot. Hold on, I have to look at.
But you know what?
That's your, 5,000 plus has to be bigger than.
Oh, for East Point two?
Yes. Yeah, we don't have.
Well, we'll see when it happens. Yeah, yeah, we'll see what comes of it.
It's a go.
When the time comes, we.
I mean, I know that they, they said pool with cabana and I took a picture of what the.
That's all I had.
When they propose something to us, we'll know what they're proposing.
Exactly.
So then they could change their mind and do none of what's on.
I'm not going to get.
Oh, I just have dog park. I, I had taken a picture of it because I was at that presentation.
Oh, Jim?
I'm, I'm just curious. The, the man, Mr. Metcalf came in and presented on general codes. Where does that project or decision process, where, where does it go next?
Trustees.
I mean, I'm assuming the trustees are the ones that decide.
We have no, we don't have money.
But they, no, but I mean, they asked, you know, at the joint meeting, Carolyn brought it up and it seemed like it would be interesting to hear the proposal and, you know, think about it. And at the next meeting, we can chat about what thoughts you have and then we can send a note to the trustees. And ultimately, it's, you know, their decision.
Well, we have to do something with our code. It's got inconsistencies and needs some updating. But I think the maneuverability sounds great, but I don't know.
Yeah.
But the thing is, once you get into this, it's an ongoing expenditure.
Probably discuss it next time. One of the, I mean, the mayor sent around an email with some, some of his thoughts and certainly one that makes sense to me, I mean, is talk to some of these other municipalities on this.
That's why I asked who the most recent ones are. Yeah, I didn't want to flat out ask the questions that, you know, Ronnie sent along because he can't, you know.
Right, no, I, I.
Yeah, no, that's why I asked that question.
It's a good idea to, when you're researching something, talk to other people who've used or purchased the service. See what their experience is.
Absolutely. Now, the list in, the list in there is great, that's a ton of references we can talk to.
Oh, yeah.
No, that was very, that was the main thing.
The first thing I looked at, I went through every.
I mean, there are a lot of local names on there, so they can certainly give us some good feedback. And, you know, you've probably heard feedback maybe from some of your other clients about their experiences.
I think the fact that there are so many of our budding neighbors having to be consistent for, I don't know, there's some real pluses for sure, but, you know, whether.
It's like any other service nowadays, right? You're not, you're paying for the platform and the functionality of the platform. Do we have inconsistencies in our code? Yes, could we fix them? Probably. That's not really what you're paying for here. You're paying for, you know, expanded functionality in a platform that will house your code.
Yeah.
That's the big benefit of it, that I see.
The updates will be taken care of. You, you know, the idea of being able to search it.
That's a real thing.
The terms and everything is.
I mean, you can search ours now, but I think this is, this is kind of, I like the multi.
Yeah, and it's an advanced search capability.
It is, yeah, it is, it's definitely more advanced.
We could put in clear cutting. And God.
I'd see.
You wouldn't have to ask Natalie to go search for clear cutting, you could just.
I mean, I don't have to ask Natalie anyway, but I'm glad she took it on. But no, you know, there are some real advantages for sure.
So we'll chat, we'll get it on the agenda for the next meeting under other business, just to kind of recap what people's thoughts are since. You know, yeah. Take, you know, take a look at the material he presented again, if you didn't get a chance to. We'll just have a brief few minute discussion at the next meeting and decide what we want to kind of draft up and send along to the trustees. Or if you have thoughts between now and then, you can email them to me, I'll collect them, that's fine too. Anything else, Jim?
Um, I don't have anything else, right now that I can think of.
Yeah, Lorraine?
No, I don't have anything.
Amelia?
Nothing to me.
Natalie? Mike?
Couple things, in perfect world, which doesn't exist, we will have a possibility of having the zoning change to propose grant to the board of trustees on Thursday meeting. For them to schedule a public hearing at their next meeting, which was March 3rd. So if, and if this happens, then you could possibly see East Point with a presentation by your first meeting, the 10th of March.
Okay.
Want to make sure we, if the zoning goes through, okay, before any of this happens. Other than that, it's this point, the meeting at the end of the month, I really don't have anything on the agenda.
For us?
For you guys.
For much?
What happened to?
Any special permission like that.
What happened to 20 Beaumax?
Sorry?
What happened to 20?
Because the project, it doubled in size and after looking at the, how, due to it being doubled in size and taking over that corner lot, there were, there was a traffic study and some of the traffic was being dumped out onto Warren Road. So I was looking at, so this is not even the project that the board of trustees looked at in the first.
No, it isn't.
So I'm sending them back to the board of trustees for a few reasons. Obviously, one, like I just said, it's not the project that they originally approved, not approved, but sent along to you. But it's also a project that's going to, that has 500 units and we don't have that type of availability for sewer. So it's got to be discussed at that point.
So, so, yeah, that, that was very problematic when I heard that it was like 500, it's like, so we have, well, is it first come, first served? So we have Milcroft, who.
They don't have buildings.
But he doesn't, hasn't moved forward. But I mean, don't we have, do we have no obligation because we've approved that project?
It's not officially approved.
And until they come and basically, okay.
That was made very clear to them.
I know, but I, I.
That's what they're going.
It seems hard.
Well, then you could have people just.
I know tying things up forever. But I, so it really, yeah, it's a big deal, 500. I was thinking about that. I thought 500 units.
Crazy, crazy.
Let's say that's, well, we know it's at least 500 new people, probably double. Let's just be conservative.
Think of how many families, right?
Our, our entire village, our population is something like 3,600 people. That's like, excuse me, but that's just hard to comprehend for me.
And so that traffic, the tra, the traffic study that they did.
I was going to say, so you.
I think I told you, the little white boxes were on the, on the stop sign at East Point, at the end of East Point Drive. So when anybody from East Point pulled out and took a right, then there was another box at the end of Beaumax. That was the only places those boxes were. So they were, were they tracking the East Point traffic?
They're probably checking stuff, studying the traffic.
But I mean, when I think about like a thousand new people, that was like.
I know.
Thought that project would go on dormant.
And then you've got 140 at East Point and then they want to do 130 across.
Saying just one project being at least that is just.
The Milcroft project has an approved site plan. The project has not been approved.
No, it hasn't.
Still escrow, so they have to be done. There's still engineering that has to be proved.
So that may never happen for a while.
Now, once he does that, or whoever does that, and he has every right to buy the sewer units that he needs, but they had to be used within a year.